Such a tight squeeze with two-way traffic coming down. I do walk my dogs every morning and we're, we do come up Mill Street and we're in the road yet again because of all the snow and everything. And it would just be so much safer if there wasn't so much traffic. So, I am in support of you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this hearing?
My name is John Bordoff. I lived 1116 Murray Street for twenty-five years. My opinion, Murray Street should be going south and Mill Street should remain the same. First off, you're gonna have quite a job just rearranging Murray Street and Mill Street, where they come together. If you're gonna change the traffic, you've got a big dip and travelers and trucks that are gonna go travel. It's impossible. It's very, very narrow at that junction. So, I would like to see Murray, uh, Mill Street remain the same and Murray Street to just go south. One.
Thank you, Mr. Bordoff. Are there comments?
I have one.
Please.
Um, so are they gonna...
Please state your name.
Oh, sorry. Laurie Fisher. So, if they do this, are they going to start clearing the side streets?
Very good side streets of south.
The little streets that are in between on the way up? Cause those are never cleaned up, so how people are supposed to get around to come back down, they'll have to go all the way up to the top of the road and turn down, not to come down if the streets are not paved. Just stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Brown, 1210 Murray Street. Uh, lived about on Murray Street for about three years. If you go with the plan of southbound on Mill, northbound on Murray, I'd like to see speed controls better, not this speed line, the signs, those little, slow speeded down. I'd like to see speed controls put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurie Huns, I live at 1270 Murray Street and I've been a canyon commuter for about forty years, um, living down at the other end and so moved to where I'm now. I feel like this is a little bit of a premature conversation and I would invite you all to drive down Murray Street and try to come, go up or down Dickerson and navigate that area, cause the potholes honestly, in the dirt right at the end of my driveway, I'd have to commute through about thirty feet of muddy, cold water, cause it's just a disaster, cause everything's never get finished. I know it's an unusual year because we've had so much snow and I feel bad for all the snowpaw folks, uh, people trying to navigate in the snow. It's been a mess. Um, and not to be redundant, cause I don't wanna repeat stuff that's already been said, but, um, I agree that, um, I'm not really opposed to a Murray Street, but would also rather see Murray Street be southbound, um, instead of northbound, because I feel like if you follow all the traffic that's coming off the bypass and from, um, Lunn Crest and that area and like John said, goes through the bomb comes down Murray Street, it's already a narrow road. And I know, you know, you've talked a little bit about the difficulty with getting semis from not going down there. I also see, you know, grandpa coming from Arizona with a, you know, his Dodge Diesel and forty-five foot tr- toy hauler trying to navigate down Murray Street. Um, whether you left Mill Street the same or not, I would rather see, um, Murray Street be southbound and Mill northbound, cause I just feel like driving all that traffic down Murray Street, as narrow as it is, and people do not slow down. I'm telling you, with the potholes on that road, where she's flying up and down that road, thirty miles an hour, I don't know how you don't get complaints about their, the bottoms of their cars being blown, cause it's pretty rough out there. So, anyway, on the little side, Carson, grab a little space for a break. Thank you.
Thank you. And the, the plan is to implement this after the paving project gets finished on, you know, the summer, just so everybody's clear on that at Los Angeles City. Is that right? Any other comments?
Uh, Skip Cunningham, 1100 Mill Street. My first question is whose idea or where did this, uh, idea come from for, uh, one-way traffic on Murray and Mill or, I know everybody's representing Murray Street, uh, but we've been on Mill Street while we've lived in the canyon practically since nineteen ninety, uh, the corner of, uh, Mill Street since nineteen ninety-three. Where did this idea get invented at?
Well, it's been a conversation that the council's been having for a number of years to address narrow street parking in the canyon.
Well, and I think, uh, Melanie brings up a good point, that if, just because we make Murray Street one-way, one of the issues that's happening on Murray Street especially is that everybody parks on the sidewalk. A lot of the sidewalks aren't even shovelled. We have ordinances for both, but it's impossible for Scott to enforce, because we have a court system that won't do anything about it. So, I don't see necessarily that turning Murray as one-way or Mill, either one, is gonna prevent people from parking on the sidewalks. I also kinda question what happens in those winter nights, that we do have to divert all the traffic coming off the bypass down through the canyon. I think it's happened maybe, maybe twice this year and it is an unusual year. Uh, I agree, but I, I, you know, so now we're gonna go one-way to Mill Street, so does that mean there's gonna be parking on both sides of the street?
That would be the idea.
And, which is gonna narrow that street, uh, which already we put a stop sign on Dickerson, uh, but that really doesn't slow down our traffic. Uh, I think we get a lot more pedestrian traffic on, uh, Mill Street. Uh, we have school bus stops and, which is gonna make it a lot narrower. I'm not really for the idea. Uh, I have a hard time imagining like Melanie was saying, one-way traffic coming down Murray Street. We've got eight months of winter, four months of spring here in Ely. That is gonna put a big impact. What are we doing with semi-traffic? Are we gonna ban them from going north and south? This is the first I've, I, I think I've heard of this, so I apologize for tying up time with questions, but I'm like, uh, has NDOT been involved? Have we done our traffic counts? Have we really looked at what's going on? Or is this our Ely idea of, let's get creative and hey, let's go one-way here and go one-way there? We had about three, four stop signs on Murray Street.
Okay. Um, Skip, your, your three minutes are up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Mr. Bordoff, you oughta consider sending a God out, all of those long back streets, all those streets that are affected. Some people are reading Legals, some may have not heard of this, uh, I'm getting mixed signals from the different people that do live up there, but I think you'd best interest the city, all residents that are on those streets should have a say, have a mail it in and then you review that and go over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah. Please.
I, I'd just like to add one more thing. Today, three semis went up, went north, uh, south on the, one semi turned around at the, uh, at the junction of Mill and Murray and got stuck, okay, and came back down Murray Street. And so, why are these trucks going down? And if you remember last year, okay, a big truck turned, uh, got on Fourth Street, turned and knocked a pole there.
Sorry guys, I don't think...
No, I didn't have to.
Did you not speak at the public hearing?
I did.
He, he didn't use his full finger.
I didn't use my whole finger. Just, just to let you know. Difficult to turn this.
No, uh, if there's no other public comments, then, um, is there any comments from anybody on the Zoom call? Okay, hearing done, we'll close public comment, move on to item eight, or I'm sorry, we'll close the hearing and move on to item eight, discussion possible action pertaining to the public hearing. Item one, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible actions. Approval to convert Murray and Mill Streets to one-way traffic with Murray Street heading northbound into town and Mill Street heading southbound out of town.
I do know this has been put on the agenda a couple times since I've been here, um, I may get brought in on the project this time a little bit late, but I'm willing for everybody's suggestions and input on this. Um, I think maybe the engineer should probably go first on some theories of why this comes to life.
Um, you know, a lot of things were said tonight that is, was driving this is the parking on the sidewalks. Um, you know, that's not good for our sidewalks, um, the road's narrow, that's difficult to go down there. So, I think from a safety aspect, it definitely would help the situation, because I don't think the people would be parking on their sidewalks anymore, cause they don't need to. I think they park on the sidewalks to protect their own vehicles from getting hit in these narrow roads. And so, I think by making it one-way, it would help that situation and then it would create a safety issue from the standpoint of, they've discussed a lot about talking, walking in the street, um, you're in a narrow street, walking in the middle of the street and so it's not a safe situation. So, if we can get them on the sidewalks, get the cars off the sidewalks, um, I think that definitely would help the safety issue out there. Um, as far as the direction, it is north to the south and everything else, the reason that, looking at that was because, um, at the intersection of Murray and Mill, if we actually switch the two directions, the way it's kinda discussed, we actually are crossing traffic out there and it creates a situation, um, kinda like what was out in majors in effect. We had a brief conversation with bike coincidence yesterday and you were talking about your time in the fires department, that was a very technical, one of your terrible accidents you were on, was at the intersection where these traffic is actually crossing each other. And so, if we make it, uh, Murray Street coming into town and Mill Street leaving town, we don't actually have to cross those traffic at that Y intersection, so that creates out a much safer intersection. And then, um, you know, I, some of the things that were said in there, I think some of the letters was talking about the cost and expense of that roadway. Um, the RTC has been looking for a couple of years now, because they've been phasing this road with the sewer and everything else that they're completing up the street, that this is the last phase to close out that road. They would have a good road from the intersection of Mill and Murray all the way up to basically Clark Street and down here. So, um, the intention is not to make it one-way now, with the potholes and everything else that's going on, the intention is that if was approved tonight, that once this last phase is completed all the way to the intersection of Murray and Mill, that, that's the point in time when this would take effect and go into, uh, to a one-way status. Um, the other thing I was discussing here was, you know, the difficulty of that intersection down there, getting valley gutters, um, at Murray and Mill, you know, there are terrible valley gutters, um, I hundred percent agree with that. And so, our intention is we would actually approve that intersection, so it would be a much smoother transition and we would be able to get through that in a much better situation than it is there. Um, a- and then the other one, things I've said earlier in one of the letters was the cost of that as well. The cost of creating and improving that intersection down there is a very small cost percentage of this overall project to complete that down to Murray and Mill. As a quick dirty calculation for just the improvements of the curb, um, the asphalt type-two, uh, different valley gutter stuff up in that area, I anticipate that from the, the actual physical improvements on the ground, we're around fifteen or sixteen thousand additional to make this one-way going down through there. And so, uh, any other questions?
So, are you asking that, that you provided, you did, just for the signage? But I notice this doesn't include any, like, traffic strapping or anything? Would you recommend any of that if you did that?
Yeah, there is some of that in the estimate, there's some striding over here because on that, so there's some signage and striding in that estimate.
Right, I didn't see any striding.
We're looking at something different.
Oh, we must still, you know, for tracing, you know?
It would be tough.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's strict, okay, that's strictly for signage. I'm looking for the, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the es- the cost estimate for budgeting to try to do that next phase of the project. Oh, RTC.
Yeah, not that, but I know what I can tell, there's still some double-digit lines stuck in there and, I mean, I, I would assume if we're doing the one-way each way, if we wanna do some traffic strapping and signage on the road as well, in addition to the signage that's gonna have to replace the hole.
Correct, correct, yes. And so, on the, on the thing I'm looking at from the budget of the RTC, there is...
So, we would be doing that as part of the RTC paving project?
That would be, by anticipation, that, as, we would do this as a completion, one-way after that project and so let's put that into the budget of our project.
After listening to some of the conversation tonight, I, I do agree that maybe, or I think personally, that we might have a little more cost in this than we anticipated, cause I do think the side streets that connect Mill and Murray going up the canyon should be addressed too, cause they're gonna see a lot more traffic. And that's something we did not consider.
Well, there's, there's that aspect and, um, I think the only other aspect is to, is to figure out how to track down on parking on the sidewalk and people abandoning cars in the road. I mean...
Right.
You're required to provide your own parking on your property, whether you have it or not is, is really not a public issue. That's the responsibility of the property owner. And so, we've gotta balance this where there are limitations, and I live on an air road as well. We still have that same issue up on the terrace, if too many people are parking in the road, yeah, you can't get by people there, you've gotta wait and, and kinda go around, but it's, you know, I'm not exactly sure what the, I don't, I'm not sure there's any silver bullet there, you might have to do...
Dude, there is no silver bullet, you know, there's always any public comments about what direction we're going.
But, but I think as part of that too, and, um, apparently Carrie Pinter remembers me saying things that I don't remember saying, but if it happened last week, I don't remember. But, but I, I, I still agree with what she thinks I said, or what I did say or didn't say, is that we should probably have either some speed tables or something down there to, to slow, to slow traffic down, because stop signs aren't gonna be what does it.
It's not.
And if it is one-way and they do feel like they have more latitude, cause they're not worried about oncoming traffic, maybe that would inadvertently increase speed for some of those people too, and we wouldn't wanna have that happen.
Sure.
Is there any way on that two to add? I know semis seem to be an issue, putting up more signage for semis, they're not, like, don't enter, like...
Well, I mean, in one of those letters, it's expressed, there is sign out there that's not supposed to be going down, down that road and so, you know, I don't know how you stop that, um, but it all moves forward.
Tell me, do you have a sign?
And so, I mean, there are signs out there that do that, so...
Is there, is there something that we can do, cause I think during one of these conversations, someone had mentioned that, oh, if you're using a GPS or your phone, it tells you that's how you go.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, if we could fix our GPS, there's plenty of people end up down those roads and not even here, but there's plenty of places they end that place because...
Cause I know you can do some, you can do some, like, data correction with Google and stuff like that, is that something?
I mean, I can't answer for sure, right? We can sure reach out and see if that's something that we can fix, if anything, this isn't a two-way route through town.
Yeah.
Can I ask the fire chief to give us a couple comments on, the canyon's always been a problem for firings and ambulances. What's your opinion, Chief Stork, on these two streets being one-way, taking into account that you guys got the lights, most of the hotels, you can go anywhere?
Right. So, with us, it's really, it's really not gonna make it progress for us, cause like I said, you know, there's plenty of places that are one-way roads, but if we need to get in access one-way because we've got additional ladder, we're not worrying about what way the arrows on the signs are, we're gonna, you know, if we're trying to try and close the road, we're gonna go in either way. Um, definitely it is a hindrance when it's parking on both sides and there's a window and you got the ambulance or fire truck and, you know, the box on the ambulance sticks out, so one-way would definitely make it smoother, uh, easier. Um, I agree, there's probably some more unanswered questions on a few things, but from us, it's, uh, it's not gonna be a big hindrance, but I think it's, you know, it'd definitely be easier if it was one-way. I mean, like I say, however though, I mean, depending what we gotta get into, we're gonna go either direction we need to go. So...
Okay.
Yeah, I, uh, if I'm my dad, I don't think it's a, a bad suggestion, good, bad or indifferent. Um, I think Mr. Jack just was onto something, just letting the residents on both Mill and Murray know what's going on. We've got a lot of good people write letters and a lot of people, um, but I just think, um, that as much as we advertise things sometimes, we still miss people and I think it just would hurt, whatever we decide what we're doing, how we're doing it, to make sure residents on those two streets get something in the mail from council, um, so we know exactly what's happening when they do.
What about, uh, the idea that was voted by just doing the one-way on Murray and leaving two-way on...
You know, I really like that suggestion, you know, do Murray southbound or whatever and then the other one?
We wouldn't be making any changes to any of the parking. Um, it would just be a change to that one-way street and hopefully allow those people to have something for their cars that they're parking.
Right. We still would run to, they, they want it to southbound, is that...
It would have to be southbound to BJ's point, because this is coming down the main road there, that would just peel off there, otherwise they would have to cross at that Y intersection in a weird way.
So, Murray would create that...
Murray would have to be southbound.
Which would create, so they're coming cross traffic?
No. You'd just divert all everyone.
Southbound.
Murray would be northbound.
Yeah.
Is that a scenario?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm confused. So, it's a...
Southeastbound towards...
You'd be going down Murray.
That's right, right.
So, you'd have to go north to avoid the situation that...
North on Murray, yeah. You're right, north on Murray.
No solid suggestion to your one, southbound.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, I've understood you're right, north on Murray, but if a truck comes down, he could also, if we leave Mill Street both ways, he could choose to go down Mill Street.
He could still go down Mill Street.
Because Mill Street, you know, was US six.
Right.
So, when it was constructed years, years ago, it had an extra thick asphalt, which we don't need semi going down Murray Street, tearing up all the way out.
Right.
So, somehow, if a truck slips through the system, I think we'd rather have it on Murray or Mill Street.
I think you're right.
Is this something we've got to add? Any other comments to show us if it's not what we suggested on the agenda?
That would be a question for Mr. Attorney. Our attorney with the time.
Also, yeah, I, I would say, said, I mean, this, this agenda item, but the language is pretty clear, um, how we wanna do that. So, I would recommend, like, tabling it, placing it on another, to have that more clear than if we wanna notice.
Could they also, could they also have the option to table the item and send out a survey with those options as residents?
Yeah.
I was just gonna make a motion. So, I will make a motion to table this item and the next gen item have Murray Street southbound one-way and also poll residents on Murray Street. So, we're going back to the southbound, so we'll have the Chris Cross?
No, no, no.
Did I say south?
She said south.
They're going southbound. I take that back.
We need further information.
Well, I can't, I'm just, I need to quit reading my notes. Just wanna clarify something.
So, the motion is to table the item and conduct a survey of residents with the next...
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Turn it into one-way, one...
Northbound.
And leaving Mill Street.
Alone, yeah.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Elliott. Any further discussion? Are we all clear?
Can we... Chris, I just want to ask, please, maybe, cause I know the suggestions sign we're southbound. If we only give them a northbound option...
I don't think southbound's on the table.
I think it can be, because of those adjustments, right? Okay, I just wanna make sure that, that's kind of, you know, that's something about that.
Motion second and further.
I'll...
I... Fair and solid. Okay, I'm off my agenda here. I'm not gonna give them a good one. I'm off now.
Or draw on my table?
No, no.
Forget him.
Yeah. Item nine, I have a sort of discussion possible action of the Ely City Council as you have amended by the municipal utility board, and I'm gonna open up all ten of these items, so bear with me here. Item one, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of six hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, from Baker Ranch FS, number one, Old Hom Baker, Nevada, the requested property owner, William F. Delchick. Uh, number two, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of two hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-three cents from, uh, twelve Daly Street and Ruth, Nevada, the requested property owner Kelvin Layer. Item three, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of two hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-three cents from fourteen Daly Street, Ruth, Nevada, the requested property owner Kelvin and Kelvin Layer. Item four, uh, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of, uh, five hundred and forty-six dollars and five cents from seventeen North, North Fourth Street, McGill, Nevada, at the requested property owner Dwayne Wilson. Item five, uh, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of five hundred and forty-six dollars and five cents from nineteen North Fourth Street, McGill, Nevada, at the requested property owner Dwayne Wilson. Item six, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of one thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents from seventeen Mahogany Street, Ruth, Nevada, at the request of Summer Renee Hauser, power of attorney of deceased property owner Michael Hauser. Um, item seven, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents from thirty-one Receiver Street, Cherry Creek, Nevada, at the request of property owner Armando Obrado Carlos Acovado. Uh, item eight, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents from, um, twenty-five eighty-four North, Thirty-Fifth West, Ely, Nevada, at the request of property owner Genuine Dawson. Item nine, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents from, uh, number two, Sixth Street, McGill, Nevada, the requested property owner Scott Rogan. And item ten, board members, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action, approval to remove past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of three hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents from thirteen M and G, Ely, Nevada, requested property owners Eric and Patricia Maurer.
Utility board recommended approval this morning on all of these items, pretty much standard of what happens and I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve all of these items, one through ten, from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second, which we're...
Second from Councilman Alworth. Any further discussion? And I'd just like to, um, thank the clerk and Candy for all their work on these. You guys have been clearing these out and getting people updated, it's, it's, it's really great, so... Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
I have.
Any vote? Fair and solid. We are down on B, new business. Item two, Councilman Williams, Heartland, Northern Railway Foundation President, Mark Bassett, discussion only, update on funding the Northern Line Rehabilitation Project to open the Nevada Northern Railway for freight traffic from Ely to the Transcontinental Railroad Interchange, a chapter a distance of one hundred and twenty-one miles.
Good afternoon, Mark Bassett, President of Northern Railway Foundation. Uh, we were working on what is referred to as a RACE grant from the federal government to open up the railroad and, uh, I approached you and the city was generous to provide a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to pay for grant writers to do that. Subsequently to that, I was having a conversation with the grant writers and there's a second grant program called the Chrissy Grant, and we had discussions with them. The RACE grant is open to any grants for surface transportation and it's capped at forty-five thousand dollars. The Chrissy Grant is specific for rail infrastructure projects and it has no cap. And so, what we've essentially done is changed gears, we've abandoned the RACE grant and we're going with the Chrissy Grant, so the city's contribution there is still being used for that grant. The Chrissy Grant is due at the end of the year and this additional time gives us the ability to actually bring the grant writers out here and we're actually going to inspect the entire line. And again, the entire idea here behind the grant is to essentially rebuild the entire railroad. from Chaffter, the interchange with the Transcom Alamo Railroad, all the way up to Keystone, the interchange with the mine. So it, uh...